Where'd my rubber one go? I'm just joking. What about my tiny one here? Is it? That's what it looked like. All right. I hereby call a special meeting of August 5th, 2025 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Beck.
Here.
Vice Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Mayor Protonfin. Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Bullock.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Our only item on the agenda today is to call an executive session. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Perfect, so I have one and two. Please vote.
All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will enter into executive session.
Check one, two. Check, check.
One, two, three. Okay, check one, two. One, two, three.
...
Let me turn my mic on there. A little new operation here. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting. I hereby call the meeting of August 15th, or I'm sorry, August 5th, got ahead of myself, 2025 to order. Those who are able, please stand for the invocation by Pastor Kim Owens of Fresh Dart Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of Jesus Christ, the only begotten Son of God, and we ask for your presence to be with us in this meeting tonight, but we also ask that your manifested presence also dwell in the atmosphere of these city buildings each day of every week. May every city leader feel your presence, Jehovah God. May they feel you close to them. We thank you for the city of Peoria and what it means to those of us who live within its boundaries. We long for our city to prosper and to become a beacon of light in this valley. We know that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. Therefore, we decree, Peoria belongs to you, Yahweh. And because this territory belongs to you... And because this territory belongs to you, we pray, let your kingdom come and let your will be done in every decision that is made among this and other meetings that govern our city. And according to 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, we pray for those in authority over us. Let our mayor and every other city leader be led by your powerful Holy Spirit in all that they do. And I speak over them, Isaiah 30, verse 21, that they will hear a voice behind them saying, "Walk this way." That God's voice will be clear and unmistakable, guiding them on the right path, whether they turn to the right or to the left. I speak over them that they hear the voice of Jesus Christ, the good shepherd, and not the voice of a stranger or the enemy. And according to your word in Jeremiah 29:7, I pray that our city leaders will seek the peace and the prosperity of the city. Guide our city leaders into paths of righteousness for the residents of Peoria, because as according to Proverbs 11, it says, "When the righteous prosper, the city rejoices." And finally, today, Heavenly Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, I pray that from the boundaries of South Peoria, all the way to north of Lake Pleasant, that the glory of Yahweh would cover our city as the waters cover the sea. And may Peoria be saturated in the presence of Jesus Christ, the Son of the living God. And may every neighborhood and street be filled with his peace and his joy in the Holy Spirit, in the mighty, matchless name of Jesus Christ. Amen and amen.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Beck.
Here.
Vice Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Mayor Proton Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Bullock.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If anyone would like to address the council about a matter, this is the last call to submit speaker request forms at this time. We will now move on to the regular meeting consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion unless a request for removal has been received for prior approval. At the request of several council members, we have, I have, I have moved, formally moved item 7C, which is now currently the 22R, from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for additional clarification and discussion. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I have a motion.
I apologize. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion.
Second.
All right, we have for second. Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Survey says, and it passes 7-0, thank you. We will now move to the regular, regular agenda and introduce new business. I now recognize City Manager Henry Darwin to introduce 21R.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank city staff for the, the effort that has gone into temporarily moving the location of this meeting from our council chambers that are currently under renovation. We had council members and staff gave them the opportunity to release some frustrations or some energy this afternoon by taking a sledgehammer to a wall in the council chambers. But we will be here until after the first of the year. But I want to, I want to thank especially those at this table here for the hard work that went into creating a venue for us to have this, this important meeting. And fingers crossed, things are going well so far, but please forgive us for any hiccups that might happen along the way. This is a, this is a new experience for, for us as well. But getting on to 21R, this, this is a budget amendment, a budget amendment dealing with some additional computers for our patrol officers. And we have making the presentation Police Chief Thomas Entriere and Deputy Police Chief Douglas Steele. So Chief, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Darwin. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Darwin and staff, thank you for having us today. What I'm here before you, or Deputy Chiefs Steele and I are here before you, is to ask for a budget amendment in regards to our mobile data computers that we utilize. From an operational standpoint, these are the laptop version, if you will, of a desktop computer that our personnel, not just police officers, but our police service officers, our animal control officers, all utilize out in the field, that is critical to the job at hand each and every day. This request for funding is to support this critical equipment upgrade. It's vital for the safety, for the effectiveness, and the morale of our personnel that are on that front, front lines. Historically, these, these mobile data computers have been assigned to vehicles specifically, and as a result, as we've continued to add personnel, more and more employees are logging on to individual devices, thus increasing the number of profiles that are on these devices and slowing these devices down, which has created a significant operational concern for us moving forward. This is because these mobile data computers are so vital for us to receive data, dispatch information, calls for service information from our communication center, our ability to verify warrants, our ability to issue citations, and most importantly, these mobile data computers are the platform which we utilize in order to write our reports. So they are tied into all the systems that we utilize as a department. The current model that we've been operating under for several years is, is hampering our efficiency from an operational standpoint. So these MDCs are shared from shift to shift, assigned to the vehicles, they remain powered on continuously throughout the day, and as a result, the wear and tear that these devices incur lead to significant needs for repair on an untimely basis, if you will. In addition to that, because they're assigned to the vehicle, there is a, there is a certain lack of accountability for each of the devices. There's been loss, there's been damage, and as a result, our requests upon the, the burden we place upon IT for repair and maintenance is ongoing and consistent. It's problematic, in fact. In addition, officers and the employees that utilize these experience significant delays and frustration because there are times when they have to search from vehicle to vehicle to find an MDC, just so they can go on duty. This is not very productive in my mind, and in our conversations between my staff, we thought this would be our best way to remedy this moving forward. Our best guess at this point, and through many conversations that I've had with employees, because of the multi-user, multiple user profiles on these devices, on each of these devices, historically, it'll take an employee up to 30 minutes per shift just to log on to the system. That is a significant loss of productivity. The solution that we're asking for is to transition to a personnel-based model where there's an increased accountability placed upon the employees and care for the assigned equipment. This will make sure that the downtime and the repair cycles are dramatically reduced so that we can ensure that they're operational as efficient as possible. In addition, these new MDCs will ensure that we have the capability to be connected, if you will, to essential digital tools that we are asking of our personnel to utilize each and every day. The improved data security, officer productivity, and overall service will enhance our delivery, our, our delivery of service to the community as a whole. Doug?
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to address the, the bottom bullet point. As we've increased the amount of data and technology within our, our department with the real-time crime center, upgrades to CAT or IMS, our computerated dispatch and our record management systems that are forthcoming, the drone first responder program, which should go live by the end of the year, the amount of data that we are now pushing in and out of those computer systems with slowing down, if we have a slowdown in it, the data is delayed in getting to officers. The real-time crime center can actually push live video feeds, but as the user profiles start building up, and we're putting layers of information on one computer that's used multiple shifts 24/7/365, we're, we're losing data and the timeliness to our officers, in which, again, one of the major reasons we developed an RTC, or Real-Time Crime Center, we don't want to diminish the, the effectiveness of those other systems that we're putting on, and that can, burden of technology continues to grow. So this is important for us from our perspective to make sure that our officers have the most effective equipment in the field when they're working.
Thank you. Okay, employee feedback. So we understand this is a budget adjustment, a request. In light of the employee engagement survey that was recently conducted, along with several of the conversations and engagements that we've had over the last several months, we recognize that equipment is a, is a critical piece of the puzzle for our personnel, and very important. It's one of the top three areas that were identified within the police department. This initiative will directly address that concern. It'll reinforce our commitment to ensure and to empower our employees to do the very best job that they can, given the tools and the resources that we're affording to them, to ensure that they can serve Peoria with excellence. This investment upgrade that we're asking of you will help us moving forward to modernize our police operations. It will increase officer morale significantly, and it will meet the expectations of both our workforce and the community at large. With that, we appreciate your consideration and continued support, and as my staff recommendation to implement this, we are requesting funding for the 75 mobile data computers, so we may assign them to the patrol officers, police service officers, and animal control officers moving forward.
Councilor Bullock.
Thank you. Just turn on work. Okay, thank you. So Chief Entriere, and actually, you and I talked about this when we had our nice four-hour initial onboarding, when you were teaching me as much as you could in that one day. And that was one of the questions, questions I remember asking of myself. Councilman Stokes, being the tech people in the, in the day job, understand that there's actually, equipment will last longer when it's assigned individually, we see that in the corporate world, than when it's assigned to a department, there's more accountability. That's, that's a proven fact. I mean, I'm not saying, because I, like police, it's just, they will last longer when there's personal responsibility, so I get that. Makes sense. I saw you're wearing older Panasonic ToughBooks. I asked, why do you have such old ToughBooks there? So that was interesting, so glad you're doing this. My only question is, and just help me to understand, why wasn't this in the budget that we just passed a month and a half ago?
I think that's a very good question. I think for us, it was one of those things where we thought, based on our current modeling, that we were going to be able to get through it. I didn't realize it was going to be such an impact, the totality of it. The more we talked about it, the budget process was already in, in the works, and, and at that point, we figured this would be the, the second best option would be to ask for an amendment.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Bullock, in all fairness, they did pull this forward and bring it to our attention while the budget process was going on, but we were so far into the budget process that, and they had money available from budget that hadn't been spent that they were going to use to make this purchase, and, and so we, as an executive team, made a call to go ahead and push it into the new fiscal year rather than disrupt the budget process that was going on.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. I just wanted, that's the first thing that popped in my head after the technology need, I completely agree with that, is, you know, why wasn't this from last year's budget? Just we're not trying to spend more than we need to this year, obviously. So, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Just to, to make another point, and I'm not tech savvy or work in the tech, tech, tech world when it comes to that, the majority of elementary schools, high schools, junior highs, or what, not that we have junior highs, but elementary schools and, and high schools now, obviously, to kind of reiterate, Councilor Bullock's point is, it's shown that these kids are actually holding on to that product and actually taking better care of that because it's actually in that person's care at that point. So it's lasting longer and, and kind of going through that process. So I think, I think from that standpoint, one is, or the second thing is, the other aspect is, when we did talk about this during the budget cycle, I think it was kind of that April session, because it was after our March meeting, we were looking at actually trying to include a portion, I think we were like, trying to do a third, a third, a third, and we kind of went into this saying, hey, let's get through this budget cycle where we're at right now, and come back and actually see what the efficiencies, and you guys have gone through this efficiency study of time savings and everything else like that, which was going on during that period of time, and so that's why we're moving this forward. So any other questions at all? Nope?
No.
Okay. With that, thank you for your presentation, gentlemen. Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 21R?
Mayor, I, I move that we approve Agenda Item 21R as stated.
Second.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passes 7-0, thank you. I'm not used to this. All right, thank you very much.
Just jump into the, the next item of the agenda is Agenda Item 22R, and that's related to, I'm confused, Kevin, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing 22R, correct? That's next.
That's next. You can stay there though, if you'd like.
You can. I can, I probably could use all, do you have any questions, Kevin?
That's what.
Feel free, feel free to ask, ask any questions.
The point is, when he walked up, it made me stop, because I'm like, this is not in order right now. I don't understand.
So Agenda Item 22R is the item, as you referenced earlier, Mayor, that was removed from the consent agenda. It was previously 7C. Given the, the feedback we, we received from several council members, you asked that the, the item be moved from consent to regular agenda. That request came in more than 24 hours before this meeting, so we were able to renotice the meeting with 22R on the regular agenda. And I'm going to myself speak to 22R. 22R is a, it's an amendment to an existing policy related to the acquisition of real property. It also covers eminent domain, but that's not affected by the change in policy that we're proposing. And as I said, this, this, this relates to the acquisition, acquisition of real property. The acquisition of real property pursuant to city code and charter, that, that process is with the, that process, the authority to, to purchase real property is with city council. But as a practical matter, if city council is to, to purchase real property, the, the council and the city needs an agent in, in order to effectuate the logistics associated with such a purchase. As it stands right now, the council policy envisions the purchase of private property, and the process is laid out for the purchase of private property. The council policy does not lay out the specifics and the specific authorities that are necessary for the purchase of state land. And as approved, as the council approved in our current budget, our fiscal year 2026 budget, and in our CIP, this year's CIP, as you can see on the screen, the council has approved the purchase of state land related to the PIC. And is now public knowledge, the city of Peoria has made an application to the State Land Department for them to auction what we have historically called Core Two in the PIC, that is approximately 800 acres to the north of the, of the 303 on both the pick, that is approximately 800 acres to the north of the 303 on both the east side and the west side of Lake Pleasant Parkway. That auction and the bidding process is to take place on August 27th, and the city of Peoria, through the authority granted by the city council, through their vote in our budget and through the CIP, has made the decision that we will be a bidder in that process. And as you can see on the screen, this is the budget document that reflects that intention, and the reason why we felt a change to council policy 3.1 was necessary. The fact of the matter is, the state land auction process has very specific requirements that apply to anyone that's bidding on land that's subject to auction, and the requirements that we have put, or the authorities that we have placed in, proposing to be placed in council policy 3.1, reflect those requirements that state land places on any bidder for state land during an auction. So we felt, the council, the staff felt, including myself, felt that this was merely an administrative change that was necessary to effectuate the intention of council as evidenced by the passage of our budget and our CIP, and this is just intended to provide me with the authority to follow the state land auction process in order to carry out your intentions and direction. And as you will see, and as you see in the proposed language change, this is limited to my authority would be, or the city manager's authority would be limited to projects that are included in the city council-approved capital improvement program, which this auction and which our intention to bid in that auction are made clear by the approved budget and CIP of this council. So with that, staff recommends, I recommend approval of the amendments to council policy 3-1, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
So, when this came to us, there's been a lot of discussion, I think, information, misinformation, there's just been a jumble, and that's why this was pulled to clarify. And so, some of the things that I just want to clarify is, so we already voted that we want to purchase this state land, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if during this auction, if we didn't allow this, who would be there to buy the land?
Mayor, Councilmember Dunn. At this point, we don't know who else might be there to bid on the land.
I think she, I think she's actually asking who from the city would actually be there to?
Oh, oh, well, that, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So, without, without this policy amendment, it arguably could require every member of council to be there for the auction, and I don't know that, without this council policy, or without any direct, with any, granting any individual the authority, that the council could, could carry, carry forth or effectuate this intent. This really is just me being an agent on behalf of the city, on behalf of city council, as authorized by this, by both the budget approval, the CIP approval, and this council policy.
I believe if we did that, we'd actually have to have a paddle for every council member, and Agnes would have to actually call for a bid every single time, correct?
It could get, it could get, it could get problematic, which is why, in the private sector, there is an individual that is designated by an entity that would be bidding on the property, that would actually hold the paddle, do the bidding, and, as part of that process.
And is this giving you carte blanche to do any other auctions, or is it just this one in question?
Mayor, Councilmember Dunn. So it certainly does apply to this upcoming auction that's going to happen on the 26th of this month, but the reason we changed the policy was to make sure that if this were ever to happen again, and if the council ever were to direct staff to purchase state land, that we could rely upon the policy to carry out the intention of the council without having to repeat a vote, to have two votes, one for the approval of the purchase, but the second to delegate the authority to the city manager to effectuate that.
Let me give one example of that, just so even clarifies it even further. If, when this, when we say we want to buy state land for a water well, as an example, correct, Henry? Could you kind of speak about that?
That would be, that would be one, that would be one example. There is a difference associated with this purchase related to the intergovernmental agreement that we have with state land already. So that was one of the triggering differences that prompted us to bring forward this policy. I mean, we fully understand there is a lot of community interest in what the city plans on doing with the Peoria Innovation Corps, which is completely understandable, and we wanted to make sure as part of that, that significant purchase on behalf of council, that we were as upfront as we could possibly be about the authorities that I would need and that are being granted to me in order to effectuate that transaction. As you can see, the council has budgeted $4.8 million in this fiscal year for that, for that purchase, and that is a significant investment, and we don't want there to be any questions about whether or not I had the authority to make that bid. So this is the reason why we felt that we needed this express authority to, that would be granted to the city manager for purchasing that property, or bidding on that property.
Do we have any public comments?
We do.
Okay. So I'll, I'll say something at the end, but, thank you, Henry.
Sure.
Mr. Paul Smith? You can stay up here, Kevin, it's okay.
Does it go up? Hi, I thank you all, really. I sent an email, bless all of you, and you got a change, and I appreciate that. The question is, is, I'm really confused by what you said. I compared the two documents, and as far as I can tell, they're almost identical. The only thing, you know, between the 2004 version and the latest one, the only thing that got kind of shifted out of there is the phrase of, the authority, I gotta try Okay, the new version no longer limits the authority solely to the acquisitions tied to the approved SIP projects. I didn't see it, you know? It seems like you have carte blanche, and I understand it's limited if you ever have that, so that's my concern, is the fact that, now, you just said you have $4.8 million, right? Now, is that enough to buy parcel C 173, which is that part of the chip, excuse me, SIP budget? So that's my confusion. I really didn't see. I read the general document, Jeff Curran's, and I didn't see much of a difference, and it's just that he took out that part. So, I mean...
Mayor, I'm happy to try to address the comment if you'd like. So, I believe what you may be referring to is the difference between the council communication that summarizes the actual changes being made to 3.1, and the changes that are actually being made to council policy 3.1.
The document that you have to support this agenda item, I reviewed those against the document that you referenced in the bottom, to the original 2004.
There is, there was, there is a hyperlink at the bottom of that council communication.
Yeah, for the 2004 version.
No, it has, it has, it has the version of, that is being proposed, that has the language that I referenced, and it's always been in there. But the summary that's in the memorandum from Jeff Curran, related to this, this agenda item, did not include, did not include that phrase, but that phrase has always been in the proposed policy, it just didn't make it to the body of the memo.
Understood. The P, I looked at the PDF, okay, of that, and so, of the original, and then, I believe, I could be wrong, maybe I did, I apologize if I did, that, the only difference was that phrase coming out, and you're saying, I kind of screwed up.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, sir, but what I would say is that what is being added to council policy 3-1 is the entirety of the new Section F.
Okay.
And the entirety of the new Section F includes the restriction on my authority being related to the implementation of a CIP that's been approved by council.
Let me explain something, just so we can simplify some of this. It's okay, I'll give you extra, it's fine. So the, the aspect is, there's not a single person on council, including myself, that can sign a check, right? The city manager works directly for the council. The predated text does not have this type of language that actually signifies his legal ability to be able to do this. This is why this is, this is literally a small change, to be able to allow this to be able to happen, so he can actually do this legally throughout this process. You understand that?
I understand what you're saying, yes.
Okay.
But my, okay, so of this, you said 4.8 million is the, and this is really going to relate to 27R, is, is that inside that 3.8 million, the purchase of parcel C?
I think legally, we can't get into the bids, legally, we can't get into the bid strategy of actually, because we're actually competing.
Oh, I'm just trying to figure out what's in that 4.8 million.
Yeah. So that, as it states in the, in the description, that was provided to council as part of the CIP approval process, that this reflects the initial 10% down payment for that, that parcel. If we were to exceed 4.8 million, if we need to exceed 4.8 million, we would have to get council approval to do that.
And that would mean you would have to go through a budget change on the SIP?
Exactly. Just, just like we did just now with the Police Department and their mobile computers, is that we would have to come back to council and amend, or request amendment of our budget, which includes the first year of our CIP, in order to make a change to the 4.8 million that I currently have the authority, the city currently has the authority to spend on this effort.
Okay, all right. Well, again, I want to appreciate you guys, you know, you did a great job. Matt Bullock, great, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Forsythe?
I was out of town, I was at a concert this weekend up in Lake Tahoe, and my phone goes on do not disturb, so when I woke up, I had multiple emails and text messages from concerned citizens over 7R. Now, obviously, I have a problem of being honest, but the council and the citizens have a trust issue, and there's no guardrails to this, there's no time limits. Yes, it's expedient, and I totally understand that. It's going to make the council's life a little easier, but it also leads into possible nefarious actions into the future. Now, Matt Bullock pointed out that at any time, this can be revoked, but it takes four yes votes to revoke this privilege. I would support it if we had a time horizon. There's obviously going to be more state trust land that we're going to be buying soon, and I totally understand this, but man, we have a real trust issue. And the citizens, obviously with all the messages I received from citizens, I was out of town, I'm like, what's going on in the city of Peoria? And we got to rebuild that trust somehow, and doing, just giving a blank check, I'm sorry, not a blank check, wrong terminology, just giving blank authority to go purchase state trust land, I don't agree with it.
Mr. Joe Clor?
Good evening, my name is Joe Clor, Mesquite District. I would just like to say that I'm 100% in support of this amendment, R 22. To me, it makes perfect logical sense. We've been talking for almost two years now about the Peoria Economic Development Pick, particularly the state land deal. All of this has been discussed extensively by the council and by community at these meetings. To me, this is just the last step in that process, to logistically allow the city manager as a representative of the city to go forth and actually participate in the state bid process. I'm not the least bit concerned about manager, city manager Darwin's ethics, or, I don't think he's going to run out and buy a Lamborghini or anything like that with our money. He's the most direct employee of the mayor and council. You guys hire and fire him. And with regards to guardrails, everything that the city's involved with has guardrails, and it's called four votes. You can't do anything without four votes. Those are the guardrails. That is all of your responsibility. I personally happen to have faith and confidence that you guys will carry out this development project, as you indicated that you will over the last two years. So I have no concerns with this particular amendment. If in the event, you know, it's decided in the best interest of the city to rescind manager Darwin's authority, four votes is all it takes. If four people in the council don't think that's a good idea, we elected you all. If we don't like it, you know, we can vote differently in the next election, if that's important to us. So, this is a rather exciting time, I think. We're at the precipice of completing this employee economic development strategy that's been in the works for, like I say, almost the last two years. I'm excited about it, as a Mesquite District resident. I live up in there, I'm looking forward to it, I think it's going to be very good for the entire city. And again, thank you guys for the job you're doing. I know you don't get a lot of praise, it's a thankless job, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dunn?
So, I received the emails, I received calls on this, and I too had some questions and needed information, and I came in and I got the information. And I, for one, do not want to lose the opportunity that this affords Peoria. I think it's good for our economic development. I think the council is well aware of what's happening, I think we've been informed, and, you know, at first I was like, you know, you read all this stuff, and you're like, what can I believe, what can I believe? Well, what I believe is, not only just what I've been told, but I also have, have asked a lot of questions today, as I think the other people that I serve with today, and we're all on the same page. We have an objective to make Peoria, as far as economically sound, in some of these investments. It is going to be good, and you might not have all the information today, but you will have all the information as we get it, and I, I think this is a good thing, and I am going to vote yes for it.
Counselor Bullock?
Thank you, Mayor. Did I turn on, yeah, thank you. So I put out a newsletter and a Facebook post about this. My goal with my constituents and any other, anybody else in the city wants to read it, I certainly encourage it, is, and I was reading it, and I got, of course, a lot of emails, a lot of people that are opposed or are in my district, and it's all good, I'm thankful at least they communicate with me. And then it finally hit me why... And then it finally hit me why there's a distrust issue, and I, I get that, I'm not, I would never tell somebody not to feel a certain way, and it finally hit me with this one, and I kind of put it in my newsletter. I was made aware of this, the council made aware of this about two months ago, same May, as we start planning. We always, of course, we know things early, because we, as good council members, or should be, we are negotiating, we are compromising, whatever, we're trying to learn as much as we can to make good decisions. There's no sheep on here, at least I haven't met any, I've been only here six and a half months, haven't met any sheep yet, but we have a lot of strong opinions, we seem really nice up here, but we're very strong behind the scenes, which is the way it should be. I understand that we have, I've had two months to meet with staff, to analyze the financials, to see the whole plan, and that's basically, then I write a document based on that to try and educate my constituents. I completely get, so some people email me a couple of times saying, but you just don't get it, you don't get how we feel. No, I do, I just, I, for better or for worse, I'm two months ahead of you, as I should be, as your elected representative. And so I realize there's trust issues, but at the same time, please have 5% faith in your council member, that what we're putting out is because we've been doing a lot of research, and we're getting the information out. You may disagree with it, that's fine, but here's the information, we found it after working on this for several months. This is not something that just popped up overnight. So I'm voting yes for it, because I have had those meetings, like other issues we've come across, and asked for changes, asked for corrections, asked for compromise, whatever it may be, to get to this point where, you know, as I mentioned in some of my newsletters in the past, if you're getting more than 50% in any political issue, that's actually a home run. So again, I feel completely confident in this, that if something does go wrong, again, give me 5% in faith, I will be a very loud voice, as I have been already, to shut something down that doesn't make sense, it's not logical, because I don't want to get sued, and if something ever represents a potential lawsuit, I am behind the scenes and in public and writing about it, because I do not want that ever to happen to the city. If something smells bad, I'm going to be an annoying loud voice for it, which I have been, ask staff already. I ask a lot of questions, sometimes to the point of annoyance, but I walk away going, oh, okay, now I can write a document about that, that's logical, factual, states the points, and then it's up to you to decide yes or no. So that's where that information comes from, but I do understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Any council members? So I just want to read something to everybody in the room, so just in case people at home haven't, haven't seen this exact language, but what we're, as I mentioned earlier, nobody on this council, nobody on this dais, has the ability to write a check. In fact, we don't have the ability to tell an employee what to do. That's just, that's just the reality of it. Our, our job is specifically to work as a council, which I think has been mentioned by a number of council members of how this, this council works together. Not everybody agrees on every single thing, and that's okay, that's how it's supposed to work. As well as people that are not on this dais, that are citizens, don't have to agree with this. The, the reality though is every single person up here, I promise you, and you could talk to anybody, and I've offered this multiple times, I have not had a single person ask me to go to coffee and ask me about this specific issue, not one. I've asked multiple times, I've said it multiple times, I've offered multiple times, not a single person has said, hey, I'd like to sit down with you and take you up on your offer and ask you or understand what the state land deal or what any of this has to do with. I, I would hope, if you were on Facebook and next door, and because I'm not, for a lot of reasons, and it's because what ends up happening is one person says something and everybody else shoots the other person down. That's not how we were built as a country, it's certainly not how we built our society. So when, when I, you know, I hear distrust, and I can, I can understand some of it, maybe just give a little bit of faith to somebody, it, whether, and it doesn't have to be me, but other council members that are actually up here, that they're actually trying to do the best they can or the right thing for their community. They didn't, they didn't do this job because they wanted to make a bunch of money, I promise you that. You know, anybody who wants to see my W2s from the city, they can go right ahead. They, they don't exist. Right? I mean, it's, it's just, the reality is, is this is not, this is not something that is a for-profit system for anybody that's up here. Our goal, our job, is to try to do the right thing for our community, and economic development happens to be one aspect or one pillar of the overall piece. The language reads as acquisition of state land parcel, just so we understand this. This is number F, or this is letter F. When a project included in the city council approved CIP budget requires acquisition of state land, trust, trust land, the city manager will designate. It's, it's that simple, folks. It, it, it's already, if we've approved a CIP or a budget item, this council has already voted on that specific item. It, when I hear roadblock, that, that is, that, that's your, that's your, that's your, your road guard in that situation. It's specifically on that item. It's not, it's not, it's not carte blanche on, if they, but this, this council has to vote on that item before the city manager can go do that job, and, or any, any manager for that matter, correct? So that's how, that's how we need to, you know, just, just give a little bit of faith, a little bit of trust, I promise you, you will see a better outcome very, very soon. So with that, council, do I have any further discussion whatsoever? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 22R?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Counselor Member Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Our super dandy system says, I'm going to guess it's 7-0. And it is 7-0. Thank you very much. I now recognize city manager Henry Darwin to introduce 23R with the fabulous bow tie today. Survey says.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Agenda Item 23R, related to Third Amendment to the amend, a Third Amendment to the amended and restated Vistancia Development Agreement. Deputy City Manager Kevin Burke will present this next item. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Darwin. Mayor, Council, apologize for the confusion, I've just been so excited to try the new system, and I couldn't wait to get up here, so here we go. I've got the Third Amendment to the Vistancia DA. This is essentially an agreement that exchanges financial liabilities, so that we're not writing checks to each other that just cancel each other out. So I'll explain that in more detail. Obviously, the Vistancia Development has been in place for a while now. The original development agreement was signed in 2012. There's been a couple amendments and the intervening dozen-plus years. The DA requires Vistancia to provide for or pay for particular infrastructure, and then be reimbursed through city, by the city through various mechanisms. That might be impact fees, that might be the Community Facilities District, et cetera. Now, there's work that's done and completed, but there's still work that is needed to be completed, and so we have some opportunities to kind of clean up and make this a simpler agreement as we go forward. Now, the DA states that, more specifically, that Vistancia, when they reach build-out, they will need to provide some additional wastewater capacity, sewer capacity, and they can either build that themselves, or they can pay the city to build that on their behalf. Second, the, the development agreement states that Vistancia is entitled to impact fees associated with the additional parks that they build and the land under those parks, or more particularly, the land under fire stations that are provided in the Vistancia development. And lastly, Vistancia is entitled to some impact fee reimbursement for roads, arterial roads that have been built and constructed or are still to come. So with that, let's get even more specific and talk about just what infrastructure is subject to this agreement. Most specifically is the Joe Max Water Recovery Facility. It still needs about another million and a half gallons per day, and that expansion would be led by the city. However, Vistancia still needs about 380,000 gallons a day to meet the capacity of their development at build-out. So they've still got some expansion to do. It's within that 1.5 that we were looking at, that proportion of shares, about 25%, is just short of $16 million, all right? So Vistancia would be responsible for a $16 million payment to the city to provide that infrastructure. Conversely, Vistancia is owed 5.6 million for the land associated with the special use park in the Commercial Core, and another about three and a half million for land associated with a park and for the fire station in North Point. Additionally, Vistancia is currently owed about 2.7 million in transportation impact fees. Again, these are for arterial roads that have been built in the Vistancia development that are subject to the transportation impact fee reimbursement. They have about another two, $750,000 that's in process of coming in, associated with some additional road construction, and so if you put that together, it's about 3.4 million itself. So if you look at kind of the balance sheet here on the left side of the ledger, what is owed to Vistancia is that 5.6 million I talked about for the special use parks, three and a half for the neighborhood parks and fire station land, and then another 3.4 million associated with roads that have been built by Vistancia in, that are arterials for the whole community. On the other side, Vistancia owes about 16 million. So when you offset that, we have a balance remaining that Vistancia owes to the city of about 3.43 million dollars. The simple way to resolve this is that as transportation impact fees come in, we'll just split them and reduce that balance as we go forward through, through the remainder of the development. Now, since we had the agreement open, we went ahead and clarified a couple of other requirements that Vistancia is needing to do, just so that everybody was on the same page. One of those is there's a, a second special use park in, in North Point, it's about 61 acres. We were very clear about, there were some requirements about a trailhead and some trail elements. This, we were looking at putting a lockable veterans' trail in that park. Now, many of you may be familiar with the conversation around the Veterans Trail outside of Trilogy in state land. This is looking...
These are really sensitive.
I'll push mine back a little bit.
Yeah, I'm going to go.
So this is an opportunity, in talking with the Trilogy Veterans Club some time ago, about replicating that inside the city limits in an opportunity where Vistancia would participate in that construction and the land associated with that. Second is Vistancia's contribution of three and a half million to the design and construction of a portion of El Mirage Road at the Beardsley Canal. And the third is the construction and dedication of a trailhead at Vistancia Boulevard and the CIP Bridge. This is going to be a nice entry point to accessing the Twin Buttes Trail, which will all be part of the Moore system here in the upcoming year. So with that, staff recommends to city council approval of the Third Amendment to the amended and restated Vistancia Development Agreement. With that, I'll take any questions. Sorry.
Sorry, I know. My parents always said I talked too much when I was a kid, and apparently things haven't changed. Could you go back to slide number three, just because there's a typo, just to make sure I read it correctly, please?
Okay.
I believe it's slide three. Oh, one more, go forward. At the bottom, it said expected to increase by 752 million in the next 90 days. Make sure that's...
Thank you for correcting that typo, yes.
I thought maybe it was 7.52, but then...
That should be a K.
Okay.
Thank you.
Inflation is quite high right now.
It is, but our road projects are not quite that.
Right, again, I didn't know if it was 7.52 million, but it's 752,000, right? Thank you.
752,000.
And then next, the, the question from a financial point of view is, I understand kind of the genesis of how it got to this point. Is there other opportu, is there another opportunity in other communities in Vistancia in North Point, now Saddleback, where this could cause a problem again? Because Vistancia will be involved in those communities as well. How do we stop this from happening again, or was this just a one-off where the accounting just, it was, we're, we're a wild, not Wild West, we're Brave New World here, a lot of new development, and all of a sudden, it's like, hey, we're settling down? Look at our balance sheet, the debits and credits here.
Candidly, Mayor, Councilmember Bullock, it's not really a problem, it's more of just an efficiency. The driving force is really the, the top line here, is that Vistancia has kind of an odd number left in their capacity for sewer that they need to build. Generally, we've been building treatment plant expansions in 750,000 gallon-per-day increments, and so 0.38 was just kind of an odd number. So we said, rather than you trying to build a plant expansion that's this odd number, we know the next expansion's going to be in the magnitude of 1.5, let's just incorporate it in, and since we were doing that, let's clean up, you know, let's take the opportunity to clean up the ledger so that it represented the minimal amount of transfer necessary.
Got you. All right, makes sense. So going forward to Saddleback and whatnot, we're not anticipating these types of things?
There's going to be a different, there's going to be a different situation in Saddleback, just because they have a different development agreement, but again, there, it's not to say there won't be amendments there, because it's a 20-year-old development agreement that is probably, needs some touching up as the new owners come into it.
Okay, got you. Thanks.
All right, this is 23, we have no other discussion. Council, do I have, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 23R?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Counselor Member Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passed a 7-0, thank you. I now recognize city manager Henry, Mr. Henry Darwin to introduce 24R.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, Agenda Item 24R is a code amendment related to fees, and Mike Faust, Deputy City Manager Mike Faust, is here to present the inspection fee portion of this code amendment. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Darwin. Mayor, Council, you guys look a little different, a little closer, a little shorter today, so this is a bit odd. With our first...
We'll resolve that by the next meeting.
We will not elevate, we will not elevate your stage. We would shrink the chairs before we elevated your stage.
Like miniature stools.
We would. We'd just sit on the floor, cross legged. Being the first council meeting of the new fiscal year, you're going to have a handful of, of fee-related items. This is the first of three tonight, so we're going to talk, this minor one here was just as inspection fee, then I'll be up to talk fiber fees, and then I'll be up after that for 26R to get into the larger discussion about the entire Chapter 27 fee structure. This one is really focused on one specific topic, and I'll talk about how we tried to problem-solve it, and the best solution we came up is what we're presenting tonight. So inside of the council policies, so council policies are documents that are prepared and approved by you, the council, and give direction and guidance to staff on how to navigate specific things. There's two that relate to fees that we're going to talk about tonight. This particular one is CP Council Policy 1-12, which governs development user fees, and it states that our fee amounts shall be proportionate to the costs associated with providing the service. So what you essentially are telling us to do is to get full cost recovery for these fees. So somebody applies for an inspection fee in this example, you should get, we should break even. We're not looking to be a profit center, but you also do not want to subsidize the fee. So site development inspection fees, in order to effectuate that, are currently a fixed percentage. So Chapter 27, that fixes the fees, fixes it at 3.5% of the site construction costs, and I'll walk you through an example of that later. This fee structure works for most development projects, but for large-scale projects, the math quickly becomes disproportionate. So where you've said, hey, go break even on these deals, if the, if the projects are massive, then ultimately what happens is it starts to generate a disproportionate amount of revenue that's really not in keeping with the intent of the policy, which is cover your costs, don't turn it into a profit center. So we went after a myriad of different solutions, and one of the things we looked at was a tiered solution. So I had mentioned earlier, our current rate is 3.5% of the contracted cost for site development. So site development is literally just the civil work, the things that happen at grade and below ground. So we thought, hey, if it's this amount of value, it'd be 3.5%, and then we'll tier it down to 3%, and we'll tier it down to 2.5%, and it quickly became burdensome as we looked at it. It wasn't going to work. And since this applies in very few projects, ultimately, when we looked at a, a series of projects, we came back and just said, maybe the simplest way to handle this is a case-by-case approach for projects that are greater than $100 million. And there's very few of those that happen, construction projects that are over $100 million. So you have already set the policy statement in Chapter 27 by saying 3.5%. So what we are recommending here is to amend code, Chapter 2, to say, upon the request of an applicant, for a project greater than $100 million, the city engineer, who's a professional engineer by trade, can look at it and make a recommendation to the city manager, who can approve a fee commensurate with the actual cost of service. So rather than turn, and I'll, I'll show you on the next page, I had an example. So this is a generic example, but by way of just trying to acclimate you to something. A project of a $550 million scope would, might be Stadium Point. So Stadium Point, on paper, is a $550 million project, call it with a $30 million civil construction, right? So under the current fee structure, essentially, we would be charging them $1 million to inspect the things that are happening at grade or below the ground. So if we say... So if we say that civil work took a year to complete, that would essentially be the equivalent of us having six full-time inspectors on-site. That's not commensurate. Really, what's going to happen is we're going to have one person who stops by for a couple of hours a day, right? So in that particular sense, for a project of that scope and magnitude, it simply does not, does not work. So in these instances, staff would, upon the request of, of an applicant for a project over $100 million, would evaluate the actual costs, including overhead, and make a recommendation of a more appropriate fee. Now, it's important to note that our job is to make sure we're generating the fees through these things to pay for our staff and pay for the project. So the fee wouldn't be recommended below that, below cost, but would be commensurate with the overall size and scope of the project. So this, although the recommendation is long and verbose, essentially what we're saying is, we're looking for your approval to amend Chapter 2 with a minor notation in Chapter 27 on the fees that ultimately gives permission, upon request, to the city engineer to make a recommendation for the engineering permit fees to a more proportionate of the actual burdens and costs incurred and approval by the city manager for only projects that have a total value of more than $100 million. So with that, Mayor, Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Quick one. I should have emailed this to you because it's probably a very minor. Are there any housing developments over that amount? That's just not my world. Or is just, is just large companies like a...
Mayor, Councilmember Bullock, I mean, ultimately, the way those projects break out, when you look at, so if you're to sell, I'll use Saddleback because we mentioned that earlier. That's one where we're out there every single day, all the time. And so the costs to inspect those projects are significant. They're usually broken down into much smaller chunks and parsed out. So we don't envision applying this particular provision to a residential deal. This would be more like if, again, a Stadium Point-like project.
Right. Council, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 24R? Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passed a 7-0. Thank you. Now recognize City Manager Henry Darwin to introduce 25R.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as Mike mentioned earlier, we have two additional agenda items related to fees. This next one is related to the Fiber Optic Communication System fees and micro trenching, micro trenching fees. We have with us Ben Gennados, who's our Development Agreement Coordinator. Ben's been here before, talking about our efforts on micro trenching and fiber optics. So he seemed like the appropriate person to task with this, with this agenda item. So Ben, welcome and take it away.
Thanks, Henry. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Here I am again, talking about fiber optic communication systems. This is nothing new. So as you recall, I'm going to talk about the ordinance approving the micro, fiber optic communication system fees and micro trenching fees. You may recall, we talked about this subject matter extensively over the last year and a half, two years. Most importantly, April 22, you adopted the Fiber Optic Communication Systems legislation, the fees and fee methodology that went along with that. We informed you at that time that there's a 60-day statutory noticing period that we need to comply with per state law. So on April 23, we posted that fee notice on the city's website. And we also informed you that with the timing of that 60-day notice period, council's break in July, we'll be here on August 5 tonight with the new ordinance. The ordinance functions basically to memorialize and codify the fees you already approved. So I know we've talked about the fees in the past, but I'll go over them really quick. Fundamentally, there's the annual minimum fee, the AMF. And this is assessed to providers prior to them earning any revenues. It's based on the number of subdivisions within their service area. We developed an AMF tier table, as you see there. And this is determined by the city engineer or city management at a city policy level. And you'll see there, it's broken down by the number of subdivisions and what they'll be charged quarterly or annually. If there are, the licensees and ISP providing internet access services, they'll be charging annual fee of 3% of gross revenues if the 3% exceeds the AMF. If it does not, they'll stay with the AMF approach. Now, if the provider contracts out the use of their facilities to a third party, we call that dark fiber services, you've probably heard that term before, they'll be facing, looking at annual fee of 6% of gross revenues if, again, the 6% exceeds the AMF. If not, they stay with the AMF. Now, I'm going to circle back to that fee because in the near future here, we're going to be adjusting that fee. And now that'll be the last slide. All the fees will increase by the CPI index annually. There's also micro trenching fees, what we brought up back in April. And that's a new technique that providers are utilizing to quickly deploy their facilities in the right, in the right-of-way. They use a shallow trench method versus traditional trenching. The fees will become effective September 5 if they're approved tonight. Now, circling back to the dark fiber fees. After we passed the legislation, we're receiving calls from dark fiber providers questioning and having concerns about the 6% versus the 3% for ISPs. We listened to them. And although the 6% is comparable to what other cities like Phoenix are doing, we wanted to find a middle ground to reduce barriers to market entry. So we worked with city management and the providers over the last few months. In our research, we discovered that other cities nationally had 3% across the board. We're trying to find a clean method to address this issue. And the cleanest method we can come up with is just lowering them down to 3% on par with the ISPs. We'll increase market competition, again, reducing the market, the barrier to market entry for dark fiber, and ultimately meeting the goal of our residents having more broadband internet choices. The lowering of the fee, actually reducing the fee, does not require a 60-day noticing period. So you'll see us back here on August 26 with the new ordinance, making that fee adjustment. So with that, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Trying to get used to this thing, so. Council, do I have a motion to approve 25R?
Second.
Second. Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Appreciate it.
I vote yes.
And it passed a 7-0. Thank you. I now recognize City Manager Henry Darwin to introduce 26R.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the last agenda item related to fees. And we have Mike, again, with us to talk about the various fee tables that would be affected by an ordinance change. Mike?
I'm hoping to get as many questions as Ben got on his fees discussion, but I don't think it's going to work that way. Thank you, Mr. Darwin, Mayor and Council. Tonight's content, so we're going to talk about fees while I answer whatever questions you have. But just to go back, when we did the budget study session in March of 20, March 26 of this year, we touched on fees, right? We talked about our triannual review process we were implementing. I did bring those slides with me if we want to look back at any of those. So we did talk about it in March in terms of where we were going. When we posted the fees publicly on June 8, I think we sent a summary communication out. So everything you're going to hear tonight is consistent with that messaging before. But now that it's time to make a yes or no vote, we can get into the details and ask any detailed questions that you may have or you may have received over the last while. So we're going to talk about Chapter 27 in its totality because there were some changes made to virtually every table. A lot of the tables were just clerical errors. But our focus specifically was on development fees for this. So you will see us touch on the entire Chapter 27, Table 1 through 19H. So I mentioned earlier in my first presentation that there are two council policies that govern fees. Council Policy 1-11, which is general fund fees. And if you recall, and if you've read this policy lately, there's a pyramid in there that tells staff how you would like us to cost-recover on those projects. And we'll touch on that in a few minutes. The reason I'm here presenting on the fees tonight partly is because Jeff Kern is not here. Jeff has left the city, or I would have signed him up for this. But our focus this year was predominantly on development user fees. So these are fees that applicants pay when they're wanting to do a site plan, when they're doing civil construction, vertical construction, fire, or all things. So that's where we started our effort, and then we had some other fees that just kind of bolted on. By way of reminder, from the March 26 session, we talked a little bit about the process staff had created. And largely because fees had not been reviewed in this city for years. And I'll touch more on that in a second. But we created a triannual process where we took all of the fees that the city charges, and we divided them into three chunks. We divided them into general fund, which the council addressed predominantly in fiscal year '25. We broke them into development user fees, which we're addressing this year. And then there's a collection of administrative fees. We're going to address those next year. And part of that is, is we, it's a lot of work, number one. Number two, the community doesn't need to be hit with all these fees being addressed at one time, right? So it takes us a lot of time to prepare them. It takes a lot of time to present them, a lot of time educating folks on what's happening. So we broke them into thirds, and the intent is to address each topic every third year. And I'll touch more on that in a few minutes. So in addition to these others, we did do some cleanup. So I'll touch on the clerk's office. I will touch briefly on body cam footage. I will also touch, we had to add some fees for industrial pretreatment. So I'll touch on that briefly. So before I get into the, to the nuts and bolts of what we've done, I do want to highlight something because the development fees that we're addressing tonight, so some of you have expressed your concerns, why 15%? That seems like a lot, or why 20, or, and we'll get into each and every one of those details. But I'm going to tackle this one head-on. These fees have not been addressed since 2018. And you might say, our policy says review them every year. I will go on record as to say, our staff have wanted to address these. They were, they have been specifically told by the previous administration not to address, we're not going to go address fees, we're not going to raise them. Yet costs have been going up, demands on their time have been going up, yet they've been specifically thwarted. So if you wonder why, and the same held true for even our water and wastewater rates. There's a reason why our water and wastewater rates went up by 2.9% a year. It's because they were artificially capped at 2.9%. It didn't mean that that was the demand. It means that was a policy decision to artificially cap it. So in this particular case, these development fees have not been addressed in seven years. And so we're coming to you with a recommendation to modify or amend the development fees, and those fees will remain constant for three years, right? So we talked about this triannual review process. So when you see a 15% increase, you're actually seeing a 15% increase across a 10-year period. So affectionately, 1.5% inflationary period every single year. And we'll go through those in more detail. CP 1-12, which is the council policy that governs these fees, in there, the council tells staff, we expect full cost recovery. Full wrapped, full overhead, full cost recovery, right? Where CP 111, general fund, you said, you, we subsidize many of those fees. I'll touch on that in a few. But on these ones, development user fees, the council policy tells us, review them every year, and you should get full cost recovery unless there is a compelling reason to subsidize the fee. And we do currently subsidize fees to the tune of, in planning right now, we have been subsidizing the planning fees to the tune of $1 million and a half, right? A year, $1 million and a half a year, we've been subsidizing these fees. Fire, so the ones I'll talk on there, we've been subsidized by 400 grand a year. So all we're trying to do in these cases is bring these things to be a little more commensurate. We're trying to make sure that we're prepared for the economic development gets there, and we have a rate structure that is competitive in the marketplace, and we're recovering costs. I can tell you, staff has conducted a detailed review of previous, previous year actuals, revenues, and projected costs. So when we did this analysis, we went back and we said, get every actual cost and every actual revenue. We looked back 10 years. We actually analyzed three because as we looked post-COVID, things were a little weird. So we snagged the last three years and did a deep analysis on the actual cost and the actual revenues. And then because we were doing a three-year look ahead, we asked the question, with the development that's coming on, are we staffed appropriately? Have we accounted for some IT things? And have we accounted for staff compensation raises? And so I'll touch on each of those. Then, beyond, after we did all the analysis, we followed what the policy says. It says do a sensitivity analysis. So what that means is look at what your neighbors charge and see how we're going to charge relative to that. And lo and behold, we were charging less than our neighbors, right? Because our neighbors have been adjusting their fees, and we hadn't been. So we went in and we did an exhaustive review. So we know where we stood going into this situation. One of the litmus tests for me anytime you touch development fees is the Home Builders Association, right? Because if you're getting sideways, they'll come talk to you. We've talked to them, we called them up, we did a meeting with them. And nobody likes new fees, but at the end of the day, they saw what we were doing. They saw the increases that we're proposing to you. And they said, because they know what's being charged in the market, they did not put any pressure back on us to say those aren't commensurate with what you should be charging. They did pose one question to me, and it was today. We are on the table introducing a impact fee, administration fee of 1%. And so what, the reason we're doing that is because we are allowed to charge for the cost of administering the impact fee, impact fee program. We currently do not. So right now, those costs are being soaked up by the general fund, when in reality, the state law allows you to charge for it. The team had two options. The first option was to redo the whole IIP. And you guys have sat through my 120-page slides on that, and I knew the answer was going to be a no vote if I did that again. So we decided with Plan B. And Plan B was a 1% option, and we stole that idea from another jurisdiction. The cost worked out to be about the same, and we thought it was a reasonable expectation. So I'm going to dig into the individual development fees a little bit more, just so we make sure we're square. So in the communications that I've sent to you, consistent with the March presentation, consistent with the June 8 email, consistent with the fees that have been posted online since June, the site development and the building fees, was we looked at our costs, they've, over the 10-year period, have gone up 15%. So we went in and did a blanket change, 15% for those fees, right? So across all of our building fees, that's going to be about $600,000 a year across all of our hundreds and hundreds of permits that we process. On the site side, it's about $720,000. So what went into those things? So one, I, being transparent, we did include one new position for the site development team to review. We included one building services position because those demands are up. We did add an Excella. So Excella is the software system we use to process permits. So we're no longer in the Stone Age. You don't bring drawings in and put them on the counter anymore. All permits are submitted electronically through a system called Excella. We added a business analyst to help with data reporting, to help with system updates. We're working on system improvements so we can process permits faster. We added one person, and what we did is we allocated the cost of those people, that person across site, building, and planning, proportionate to the total cost of the departments, right? Additionally, we did take some of the planning department's time. We took 5% and allocated 5% of their cost to site because we did a time study, and that time study... Sorry, I thought there was a wind chime for a second. My prosthetic is going. We took, we did a time study of all the planning's time. And as I told you, we've been subsidizing them heavily. What we, and that time study told us, 5% of their time is spent reviewing site drawings. 15% of their time is spent reviewing buildings for architectural things. 60% of their time is spent on planning, and 20% we called for general community benefit. These are things where they're doing code modifications or, you know, a general plan of reviews, things that they're doing for the broader good of the city. Those, that 20% should be soaked up by the general fund. Other things, we should do our best to recover those costs. So when you say, how did we get to 15%? All we did, very simply, was we took the costs for the last three years, the average cost for three years. We bolted in these two positions that each department needed. We bolted in the Excella position. We took the pay raise, so we said, hey, we think we're going to give X amount of pay raise over three years. We took the midpoint, so we, and we took 26, 27, FY '28. We took the midpoint at FY '26, and we just set it, it'll all average out over time, and that became our cost basis. When we looked at cost period over period was 15%. We then adjusted the fees according to 15%. So that was how we did site and building. For planning fees, as I told you, these fees are heavily subsidized. So I've already mentioned, I took 5% of the fee and put it into site, 15% of their cost and put it into building, that's why those fees are that. Then we came back and said, what have we got left? And we had about... And we had about a negative $1 million. We went, we're not raising fees. Just to give you a perspective, the total planning fees in an annual basis are about $400,000. So there was no conceivable way for us to come back and go, we're going to get $1.4 million out of this. So we looked at it, we said, you know what? Based on where we are, based on what's going on, we, we think a 20% increase in their fee, it's going to generate about $87,000 of additional revenue, but you're, I'm here telling you, I'm recommending to continue to subsidize it by $850,000. It pains me to say that, because development should pay for development, but at the same token, I don't think it was appropriate to come back and expect to recover. You would never get people submitting site plans. If the site plan submission fee went from $6,000 to $37,000, we would thwart development very quickly. So as we looked at it, we did the sensitivity analysis that you asked us to do, we looked at it and said, this is reasonable, we think so. The one thing we did do is we did implement a pre-application fee. So if you want to do a pre-application, there is a fee, but if you move to the site plan process, that is credited to your site plan application fee. One that raised a lot of questions was fire, right? So we went in, we looked at fire. Fire, this fits two buckets. It really fits your annual review, and it fits your one-time plan reviews, so new builds and recurring. Fire's been upside down, minus $400,000. And so when we looked at it, we said, the goal is to try to get the cost recovery. Again, this is for new build plan reviews, this is for annual renewals, and we looked at it, and we said, in order to break even, we had to increase fees by 100%. We didn't think that was reasonable. As we looked at it, we looked across the market, we said, it was unrealistic for us is to throw down and say, we're going to double it. So we came back and said, 50%. It felt right, when we looked at it, it felt, it got us directionally correct, it started to point us in the right direction. Overall, for all applicants, that means about $200,000 of additional revenues that would come to us, costs aggregated across the various projects. Let me pause there. Mayor, is it okay? Because I want to go to other fees, and so can we, can we just pause and ask, are there any questions on the development fees only? Because I want to talk to you on clerks, police, I want to talk on the general user fees, which are the social programs. But let's just pause for a second.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, so what's driving these costs, all these fee increases, what's driving all these costs?
Well, part of it is just time. I mean, when you haven't touched fees in seven years, right? I mean, think about anything, right? A lot has changed in seven years. And so subsequently, as costs go up, the direction to us is full cost recovery, right? As cost goes up, that's what drives the fees. So this isn't a profit center, right? We're not doing this to make money, we don't, it's not the intent, the intent is to cover the costs, so costs have gone up over seven years. This is why I think the council policy is explicit, and it says, review your fees and come back to us. Because what you don't want to do is have significant bumps like this. And we have a significant bump because this hasn't been addressed. And, and, and staff have been frustrated by that. So it sucks to be the person to come up and have to take on the fight. You know, I think a lot of the criticism we get as city management team is because we're doing things that hadn't been done. Trust me, it's not comfortable to be the person calling, taking action, and doing things that should have been done before, and we're doing now, and having people question your integrity about it. Like, so the fees are going up because the costs are going up.
I trust you, trust you.
So if I, if I could add just one, one more example of a cost that has increased over the past seven-plus years, and that is the, the cost of our staff or the cost of labor. And one of the things that I have heard regularly from council in my individual interactions, but also sitting here at the dais, is that the council wants employer to be the employer, an employer of choice. And the fact of the matter is that we compete with all of the other cities throughout the valley in attracting high-quality staff to our city. And what that means is that we, we, our costs have increased in order to keep up with the market for the, for those professionals that perform these duties, to the tune of about 7% a year. So that alone, the cost of our labor, has increased about 7% per year during that period of time. So a 15% or 20% increase over a, a, a fee that hasn't been changed in seven years is, is, you know, absolutely, in my view, is absolutely appropriate with the labor costs alone that have increased over that period of time.
Mr. Darman, thank you for that point. And I think a good example is, we work to our budgets, we're, this is a pretty fiscally conservative city. And so what happens then is if those labor costs go up, and over that long a period of time, over a five-year period, ultimately what happens is you have to start making trade-offs. Do I add people? Do I stay constant with my people, or do I reduce my headcount in order to get raises? And in a world like this, time equals money. Development is time equals money. And so I think with that, to your point, why are they going, costs are going up. And so this is why we have to follow council policy, we need to review them annually. And I think with the triannual administrative process we're putting in place, we'll be successful in doing that. It's painful upfront, and as I said, it sucks being the people who have to take the battles on, but that's why we're here. We're here to have the tough conversations and do the right thing.
Hi, Mike.
Sir.
Thanks for explaining a lot of this to us as well this evening. I've had a number of constituents that raised some concerns that they thought that we were maybe raising fees for other things that we were lacking on, like the aviation unit and things like that. Can you speak to that?
Mayor, Councilmember Stokes, conspiracy theories crack me up. And so I can, I, I have no other definition to apply that to than to call that a conspiracy theory. Like, we are not around, and here's why. Like, we're trying to promote economic development, we spend a lot of time just talking about acquisition of land for economic development purposes. If we started to jack up fees, we're thwarting economic development if you go sideways, only to repurpose them for a different, I mean, that's, that's, that is a conspiracy theory that people who are upset about one thing are now trying to associate everything else to it. I mean, people who sit at home with five Facebook user accounts and thinks things up make stuff like that. So when people are on FaceChat and Snapbook making those things up, I mean, we can't, I...
You clearly do not have kids at home.
So I'm sorry to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to be that blunt, but we work way too hard and try to do the right thing to, to be accused of, of making those types. I get why people say those things, but you're accusing hard-working people who are trying to do the right thing for the city of being nefarious like that? We're not, I assure you, we're not doing that.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else in developments, sir, or move on?
Let's go, let's go.
I do, I, the reason I wanted to break is because the majority of the fee increases that are proposed are in that development fee world, but these other ones are nuanced and different, and I just, I did want to highlight them. So there were some in the clerk's office, so this is going to be chapter seven, like table, uh, chapter 27, table one, maybe one and two. There was some adjustments to the research that has a specific fee, so I wanted to call that out. But one of note was a standardization of the copies of public record documents. And so we take public records requests very seriously. I, I assure you, Mr. Darwin holds us to a very high standard, so much so that the city keeps emails for longer than 90 days that it did before Mr. Darwin got here. So he holds us to a very high standard to this. And so one of the things that went in is a lot of work to make sure we set an appropriate fee. So somebody has a public records request, and they say, I need copies of this, a lot of time and energy of staff goes in. So we wanted to standardize the public record document at 25 cents a page when people need to print it out page. So I, that was a big one. Another one that comes out that we do a lot of is body worn camera footage. The cost to redact these things is very high, it's very time-intensive, and state law dictates the ceiling that you can charge. And so we will not recover costs on this, but we did specifically address the body worn camera footage to be what the state statute provides. My favorite one that causes an immense amount of confusion, so I brought some other examples to talk through, are the general fund fees. So I remember when we did this in the FY '25 budget, I was relatively new to the city, and I was baffled by this whole thing, and spent a lot of time, so we'll take a few minutes to unpack it, because it can be confusing. So as I told you, CP 112 governs development user fees, and in that deal, you're telling us full cost recovery, right? Full cost recovery. But the fees that are inside of 27, table 27-5, so these are things like arts, library, culture, parks and rec, and neighborhood and human services in particular. They are governed by council policy 1-11, general fund. And it's got that cool pyramid that's on the image. I know, I'm sorry, it's a little tough to read in the back, but ultimately what this pyramid does, and it says, hey, the city's going to subsidize certain fees. And we're going to do this by putting them into a bucket. And so the very bottom of the pyramid says, hey, these types of things we think have a big community benefit. And as such, we want you to recover 0 to 15% of the cost. So we're going to heavily subsidize these fees. But then on the other end of the spectrum, exclusively individual benefits, you've said, hey, I want full cost recovery. So maybe these are like adult sports leagues. Like an adult sports league would be a full cost recovery item, where maybe like our before-school, after-school program, or other things, they'll fit somewhere else in this strata. So the way that it was set up in the FY '25 budget was a change from what had existed previous, and it's broken into two chunks. The maximum fee associated with this recovery goal is established in table 27-5. So when you vote tonight, we are proposing some changes to the maximum fee threshold that you would say, hey, you can go up to this threshold per the table. The actual fee that people are charged, however, is set during the budget process. So the fees that citizens are going to pay in FY '26 were voted on in June, when you voted on the budget. And I have some artifacts that I'll show in a second to tell you. But it can be very confusing. Maxims are set in the fee table, the actual fee that is charged is determined and solidified in the budget. Mr. Mayor. Oh, it doesn't, I cut it off. I'll get you a firm answer.
Mine says 20, I, I just, for reference, it just says 27-3, because I pulled the fees that we spoke about.
I, I would have to look specifically, I just don't have it in front of me. So what I pop, I, I'm going to flip between a couple of slides really quickly, and for those of you in the back who always give me a hard time that my slides are busy and you can't read it, I apologize. I apologize.
It's really, it's really the tech guy's fault, is what you're saying.
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just, I'll, I'll...
Bigger screens.
I'll eat this one, okay? My 47th birthday present?
Yeah.
I'll put them on so I can read it. So the table that's on the screen right now is what was posted in June, the 60-day notification process. And you'll notice the columns, the second, the columns on the right and left say maximum resident rate. So this is the, we're setting the maximum ceiling permissible. So what you're saying is, hey, in accordance to the cost recovery goal, I'm only approving you to go to those ceilings. This excerpt is from the FY '27 budget books you received for the March 26. These are the actual fees that are charged to the client. So I have a, these are both neighborhood and human services, so these are adjustments to the ceiling. So when I'm talking to the director, the director says, hey, Mike, I am looking forward, because we're only doing this every couple of years, I don't want to do this all the time, so I'm just looking forward and saying, hey, we might have pressure with these ceilings, so I'm looking at the ceilings now. So that's all you vote on. If you vote yes tonight, people's parks and rec fees don't go up tomorrow, right? They don't go up on September 5 when this is enacted, because you're only voting on the ceilings. The actual fees that people pay for things was already established when you voted on the budget in June. So a vote of yes tonight will not affect the fees that people will pay for those social programs, arts, library, culture, neighborhood and human services, parks and rec. You've already voted on that, it was in June. So those fees, they're summarized right here. This is just the excerpt, I think, Councilmember Dunn, we went over, shared the fees that did go up year over year. It wasn't all of them, but there was some in, in parks and rec, and there was some in neighborhood and human services. So, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but just in summary, so CP 111 and 112 are what we guide and what we drive these decisions off. We use cost, but you've told us how to recover, right? Fees were not adjusted for several years, and so as the city has grown, it's been critical for us to ensure the financial capability matches the personnel capacity, right? We must also seek process, so I think the other thing to note for us, especially on the development fees, is we need to seek process improvements too, because we can't always be coming back for cost increase, and we're doing that simultaneously. But these prolonged durations on the development fees have definitely risen costs up. They really have. And in, in some cases, it was slightly unavoidable. But in the development world, time equals money, and so making sure we have the right resources, the right capacity, specifically in the development fees, will help us find success. Okay? With that, Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions before I make the recommendation.
Councilmember Bullock. And thank you, Mike. And you and I went back and forth a couple of times, and I needed that education to understand, again, it's, anything as you're on the city council, you're learning 100 new things that are not your day job, so to speak. So I appreciate you taking the time to go through that. One thing that just isn't gelling, and I'm sure you can do this in 30 seconds, and, you know, it's a concept that is completely foreign to me, and so I, maybe I just need a little bit more, a little bit more. There's that, on the, we'll call that the resident services, AMPM, you know, sports programs, whatever, right? That there's a maximum, and I get that, a maximum you can charge, but yet it's actually fixed in budget.
Correct.
So verbiage-wise, I get exactly what you're saying. That's illogical to me. Why would we even worry about setting a maximum or this kind of threshold when just, each year we'll just set, or every three years just set the fee? Why do those, that particular table, 27, I believe it's 27-5, I may be wrong, why is that, having a maximum, what does that actually do when everything else is just a fixed fee? Like development, for example, it just, it's, whatever reason, it's just not clicking.
Mayor, Councilmember Bullock, one is purely administrative, so setting the budget, you guys enact that in one deal, you do your deal, versus publicly noticing 60-day periods, 30-day delayed enactments. So because we're working with, inside of the cost recovery goal, all we're doing is doing the legal noticing and all that to set that ceiling, and then essentially, we have the flexibility within that band of the pyramid to operate and let us make a recommendation, you make the discrete decision on an annual basis.
Okay, because it, and, right, it just seems like, unless I misunderstood it again, the, we'll call it the resident services had a max, but the other ones did not.
Yep. So, and the reason for that, sir, is the CP 111 offers a window. So council has not said, hey, go recover full cost. You've actually told us, according to the pyramid that's on the screen in front of you, I don't know if you have a little screen where you can see that. You're, so we're saying, hey, recover, so for community slash individual, get somewhere between 15 and 50% of that. So essentially, because there's that window, there'll be fluctuations year to year, so that's why we solidify the actual cost in the budget as a cleaner way, versus going through and just establishing that max. Now, the other fees, there is no min or max, because you have not given us a window to operate in. You've give, you've said, go recover cost.
Okay.
And so we're, so you've said, on those very specific applicant fees like developments are, there's a discrete number, because you said, go recover cost. On the other ones, we're setting a max and adjusting the cost, the actual fee below, because the council has said, operate in this window.
Last question for those, again, resident fees, table 27-5, is that the logical way to do it, or should we do it just like we do development fees without having that max? Opinion question.
If, if, Mayor, Councilmember Bullock, if I, if I might, I, I believe that one of the reasons that, that this has been structured the way it has, is it provides guidance to, the maximum fees provide guidance to staff when we're proposing our budget to council. And, you know, we have a billion-dollar budget now, and because there are so many expenditures associated with the budget, I think that the thought, this was not something that we've created recently, this was created long ago, I think that the thought was to provide guidance to staff as set forth in ordinance as approved by the council, when setting the fees as part of the budget, you can set them acco- When setting the fees as part of the budget, you can set them accord, we set them according to this general guidance, but just don't make them go above this amount that we've approved in ordinance. So, we don't get bogged down in this type of discussion about these fees, when we have, you know, millions and billions, a billion dollars' worth of other projects to talk about. I think that's just my thought, and my opinion, and why this was set up the way it was.
And, Manager Darwin, thank you for that. And I think that's ultimately remembered, these fees are a recommendation we're making to you to adopt. So, essentially, it is our team in neighborhood and human services saying, hey, we're seeing some pricing, some cost pressures, and as such, we're recommending that you increase that ceiling, knowing that we'll have conversations during the next budget cycle in FY27 for you to look at them.
Gotcha. Okay, I appreciate that.
And I've been married long enough that I don't give my opinion in public, sir, so I will not give my opinion to that particular one.
You can email me your opinion, thank you.
I won't even do that, sir.
You won't do that, it's public.
That's fine, no, I appreciate that. And this is one of those things, I thought it was brought up earlier as well, is that, you know, we're relying on all the teams in the city to educate us on doing, again, we're not in the revenue rate, you know, we're not trying to make money off this deal, but we also don't want to lose any money. And so, we're looking to all the specialists and the experts in the city to tell us, you know, we are losing money hand over fist in this specific department, this specific fee. We have to at least fix that. It's a bad message to carry to developers, to residents, anything to say, hey, sorry, you know, it's been great for the past couple of years, but now, we can't run in the red. Now, if we can, if residents come up with an idea of, hey, here's a great way to save money, reach out to me, talk to me, we're happy to talk about that. But right now, the way it stands, we cannot lose money, that doesn't make sense, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and Mayor, Councilman Bullock, when I gave my emphatic response to Councilmember Stokes about the conspiracy theory, I mean, we're the folks who do the homework, we're the folks who do the math, but we're also the people who work with the developers every day. So, when we, it's not like somebody makes a decision and somebody else has to carry it out. We're the ones carrying it out. And so, to your point, we understand the pressures on both sides of the equation, right? We're trying to make sure the team has the right resources, we're trying to keep costs competitive, especially on the social programs. I mean, these are near and dear to a lot of our hearts, like, we're invested in these programs, we don't want to see them go up. We need to manage them. I mean, this is really important to us. So, there is a very fine line on how we do those things. And I think the third leg of that stool is, what are we doing as an organization to due process improvements and get better, so we're not feeling those cost pressures the same? We worry about all those things. So, when we show up for the hazing that are these meetings and the discussions that we have, we've thought through them, and we're coming forward with a very well-informed and thoughtful piece of conversation, and we welcome the questions. We genuinely do, because we like that dialogue, right? At the end of the day, the more informed you are, the easier our jobs become, the better we can serve the community.
Do you like all my emails, right, that you're saying? That's on record? Okay.
I'm going to say yes, for the purpose of this conversation.
So, I'm, so I'm going to, I'm going to make a point, I'm going to kind of go back for staff mentally, two, almost two and a half years now, and really look at the aspects of what we started talking about then. And then, it kind of, it goes directly to this chart, and it goes to, when it goes to fees. I believe it was my third or fourth council meeting, I think we had the water conversation, right? I'm not going to bring up good and bad, I'm just, I'm not going to pick it on anybody. But, but when we talk about, you brought up kind of the artificial aspect of keeping rates low and, and fees low, when it comes to those things, that's not necessarily to put judgment on one previous mayor or not, but the problem that we have is, is if we're not doing this on a yearly basis, which is why it's set this way, then we're, we're holding this water, if you will, until we actually, until it actually breaks the dike. And this is really where we're at. You start to look at, I've been on both sides of, of the construction side, right? So, I've spent, you know, literally $50 million in construction over, over the years on my own personal properties, and the question that kind of amazed me was, some of the questions that came, was, I never, never said, man, that fire inspection fee is really high, right? It just was never even a question. In fact, that was the last thing that I was worried about, were the city fees. And it was coming out of my pocket. It's not like I'm, I don't have investors, I don't, it, literally, that was the, I never even thought twice about it. I asked our CFO, that has been working with us during this period of time, did this question ever come up in your mind? He's like, no, it goes, actually, like, I built stuff in other cities, and you guys seem to be the lowest, and I kind of almost questioned, like, hey, I hope they don't find out, you know, type thing. We have, we have not charged enough for this. When, when we're going through this process, and when somebody says, well, you're raising the rate by 50% on fire inspections, you go through this process. Just so everybody understands, we're still not even close to recovering our fees from that. I mean, he gave the presentation on that, but we're not, we're actually not paying for that. We're actually subsidizing that in this process. I'm going to go back. During that period of time, we talked about, there's certain pieces when it comes to fees. There's taxes, and there's fees. These fees are what actually happens on a, on a, on a daily basis, when somebody, one person chooses to actually do something, build something, have something inspected, go through this process. The thought process of this is, does not go across the city to every single person pays for those other pieces. When we subsidize that, that does. So, this chart, if you could go back to that chart, if you don't mind, because I think it's extremely important.
Darwin?
Yes. To, to me, this is, this is a very big deal, because it leans itself to the social return on investment of what the city's job is to do. When we have programs like AMPM programs, which I've visited a number of times, and we've got some very, very special people that are in there, we are, we are not covering our costs in this. And that's okay, because it is, it is for the greater good. And I think when we look at a chart like this, we go through this process, that is why that's so important. So, I did not come up with this chart, council member, council 20 years ago, I think, or I think it was 18 years ago, came up with this process and adopted this, and it has been modified a number of times, to think about what the social return on investment is as a city. So, when we're, when we're setting these guidelines, I know, because I've seen staff, I've talked to staff about these types of things, these are, these are some of the most important programs in our city, and I, I think myself and the rest of the council applaud staff for all the efforts that they've put through this. I've seen the thoughtfulness that you guys have gone through this when it comes to fees. And, you know, you, I saw one that was a full, full fee, and, you know, we haven't raised that in, in, in seven years. You know, you start to look at that, it's like, we, that's why those things need to be adjusted from time to time. Just the cost of inflation, the cost of gas, unless you drove a Tesla on the way here, and if you did, God bless you, you're probably saving some money. But, you know, that's, it just, it, it, everything has gone up. We have to be able to adjust these fees to do this, and ideally, we're doing these in a reasonable time. Why, some people may say, well, why wasn't this done last year? Why isn't it done every single year?
I can, I'll answer that.
Please.
The reason, so Mayor and Council, the reason we didn't do development fees last year is because we did general fund fees.
Exactly.
And so, this is why, so if you, I brought it with me, just so I could, so, this is an excerpt from the March 26, March 26, 2025 presentation?
Yep.
Year one, so we've now started this process. We did general user fees last year, so technically, as we start the formal process, year one will be development fees. Year two, next year, we'll come back and do admin and some business fees, then we'll come back around and do general, general fund user fees if we need to. So, the whole point is that you're not feeling the pain of all of these in one time, but the development fees should be bundled. It would, it wouldn't make sense if we did site one year and building another and fire another. So, we broke them into this, because honestly, this process is super painful. It's painful for you, it's painful for constituents, it's painful for us.
Yep. So, with that, you know, we, we as a city are the largest nonprofit in the city. Our job is to not make a profit, go through this process, and make sure that we're actually doing these things for the greater good. So, thank you for staff.
Well, I'll do my last slide, just so you guys can hear the thing.
I want to thank you, thank staff for doing all this, this effort in this process. I think the thoughtfulness that you guys have had in this is, in my opinion, you know, very, very warranted for the, for all of us, and being able to share the amount of information that you have. And, you know, seven years is a long time, we should, we should continue to go that.
So, with that, Mayor staff makes a recommendation to adopt ordinance 2025-21, which is the amendment of the associated revisions to Chapter 27 Tables, 1 through 19.
Council, do I have a motion to approve 26R?
Mayor, I move, a move to approve 26R is stated.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passes 6-1, thank you. I now recognize City Manager, Mr. Henry Darwin, to introduce 27R.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you may recall, before our summer break, we began the process of annexation related to the Peoria Innovation Corps. Chris Hockes is here, our planning director, to kick off a public hearing, but we will have a public hearing, actually, we have two public hearings, related to the annexation of the state land parcel, as we've been calling it Parcel C. But with that, I'll turn it over to Chris for more details.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Darwin, and good evening, Mayor and Council. What I'll do is, I'll present items 27R and 28R together, because they're related, and at the end, I'll ask for separate actions on each of those items. So, items 27R and 28R, they pertain to a sliver of state land that we call Parcel C. I'll tell you why in a minute. But if I can draw your attention to the map here, what you're looking at on the right is North Peoria, east of the Aguafria. You see a lot of blue up there, all that blue is state land, right? We know most of North Peoria is state land, the part that's undeveloped. You can see right through the middle of the graphic, that's Lake Pleasant Parkway, cutting east-west, Loop 303. So, the land that we're talking about tonight is that little sliver of orange called Parcel C. That land is in the, effectively in the Aguafria River, and it's effectively open space. So, you may recall at our last hearing on June 17th, we had a public hearing to consider the annexation of this sliver of land. We talked about how this sliver is somewhat of an anomaly. Most of the state land that you see on the screen was annexed in the 1980s and 1990s, and somehow, this little sliver got overlooked, right? So, it's like, one of the last remaining pieces of state land, it's still in the county. And so, one of the purposes of this objective tonight is to consolidate all the state land within the city, so it falls under one jurisdiction. And also, as you know, as we go forward and continue the master planning of the Peoria Innovation Corps, we have all the land consolidated within one development case there. Now, state law is very prescriptive in how we look at and process annexations. So, back in June 17th, it required a public hearing, but it did not allow for action at that time. So, the purpose tonight is twofold. One, is to take, consider and take final action on the annexation of the 173 acres that orange strip there. And then, secondly, is more of a perfunctory objective, and that is, that state land requires that when we annex land, we have to provide for what they call initial zoning or translational zoning, within a certain period of time. And so, we're bringing both of these together at the same time. And so, I will make the objective, because we are working on the pick entitlement right now, the initial zoning would just be intermittent or transitional, because it would be included within the overall zoning that we would do for the Peoria Innovation Corps. So, a little bit of background, on this graphic, what you're looking at again, is the similar area, but you're looking at some of the areas along the southwestern portion of the Loop 303. As I mentioned, Parcel C is one of several targeted state land parcels identified several years ago. So, you'll see a number of these parcels that have, that are highlighted, right? And you'll see Parcel C at the top with that blue band around it. So, these are all parcels that are either strategically positioned along the Loop 303 for economic development, or they're adjacent to existing development or infrastructure. So, at the time, they were just simply labeled, you know, Parcel A, Parcel B, Parcel C, and so forth. Parcel C is more of a cleanup and more of a consolidation. As I mentioned, really, what we're talking about is land that's in the flood channel of the Aguafria River. It will function as open space as part of the Peoria Innovation Corps master plan. Additionally, these parcels are required under state statute to get prerequisite approval from the state selection board and the land commissioner before we can even annex it. So, the state selection board is the governor, it's attorney general, and it's treasurer. So, these folks have to meet, it's part of a meeting, and provide that requisite authority to annex land. So, when you look at the screen, we've already annexed Parcel B at 109th and Deer Valley back in 2022. And then, last year, we annexed Parcel D1 along the Loop 303 as part of the North Peoria Gateway. So, this is the next piece of this puzzle here. What this graphic shows you here is the annexation process and the initial process. Now, as I mentioned, it's extremely detailed and very prescriptive in state statute and how we, how we proceed, we proceed in this, and handle these items. There is very little discretion, it's all spelled out in state statute. The, on the left is the annexation request, you'll see the state statute citations, and so the way annexations are worked. Once we've gotten that requisite approval from the governing board and the land commissioner, we then embark on a internal analysis. Is this an area that we can serve? Does it make sense to bring into our community? Does it meet our annexation policy? These are things that we all look at as we look at an annexation request. So, it all starts with a petition. We'll file a blank petition with the county recorder, and then, we have to provide notice, notification for an upcoming hearing. So, again, our first hearing was June 17th, we were not permitted to take any action. Tonight is the second one to consider and take final action on the annexation. Concurrently, on the right is initial zoning, and so, under state statute, we have to apply translational zoning within six months of annexation. So, in practice, we bring these two to you at the same time, but the, but the state statute does not allow us to apply greater density or intensity than what the county already had in place. And so, this is a process whereby we are effectively assigning Peoria's version of what the county had before, okay? And so, this is a process, I'll point out, that we did take two planning and zoning commission for a public hearing, and then, tonight, we're here to talk to you about final action on that case. So, if I could, just to break them down, just a little bit finer detail, so again, when we're talking about 27R, that's the annexation of Parcel C. Again, as I mentioned, we've gotten that requisite authorization, it's, it's within our planning area, it consolidates the land within state land, all within one jurisdiction, we can serve the area, it meets our policy. So, our recommendation is to move forward and to effectuate, complete this annexation. As we move into 28R, the initial zoning, as I mentioned, state statute is very clear in how we can proceed with that. Currently, under the, under the county zoning, it has zoning of rural residential, RU43, that's basically just means one acre lot zoning. Our closest and most associated category in the city code is Suburban Ranch 43, or SR43. Our recommendation would be that we apply that initial zoning if we choose to annex Parcel C tonight. Because the initial zoning process is more perfunctory, it's a little different from a standard rezone. You'll note, when we do a standard rezone, there's lots of public meetings that occur, neighborhood meetings, and then we come forward to the planning zoning and city council. We do require the same amount of notification, posting the site, putting it in the paper, and also providing the postcard. So, while we still do the same amount of notification, there is no requirement to hold a neighborhood meeting. Again, it's more of a perfunctory, more of an administrative task here. To date, we have not received any communication support or opposition to the initial zoning. We did hold a public hearing in front of the planning commission back on July 17th. There were no speakers present to speak on the item, and after deliberation, commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval tonight. So, as I conclude, again, there are two actions here tonight. One is to, we are recommended to adopt an ordinance to approve the annexation of this little strip. Again, as we move forward, this strip would be part of the larger Peoria Innovation Corps entitlement. And then, secondly, that would be to apply the translational zoning until that larger zoning is put in place. And, Mayor and Council, with that, I can answer any questions.
No questions. We have Paul Smith. Watch that, watch the yellow thing.
Yeah, I saw it.
Hey, at least he, at least he brought it over.
Um, Mayor, Councilman, I believe-
Okay, let, let me pause for one second. Let me, Councilman, for the discussions, no, I will now open the public hearing for item 27, I have to follow this, sorry.
Okay, there goes my thought.
Do we have any members of the public? Yes, we do, Paul Smith.
Um, I believe City Manager Darwin did clarify, one of the points that I had was, it's 4.8 million in the SIP budget, and I assume it's to purchase this. He said it was, no, it's not.
Not, this is, this is not part, this is just a rezoning of this, of this land.
Oh, I know, but eventually, okay, then, I'm confused, where are you going to get the money from to purchase this?
This is not, we're not purchasing it, sir, we're just-
Oh, you're just annexing from the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then, my next question is, you mentioned open space. Is that what the future is for this? Can, you said, I got the impression it was a riverbed, or something along that. Can, you said, I got the impression it was a riverbed, or something along that. That means there's going to be flood problems, so can any sort of buildings be built in this area, or is it just going to be designated as open space?
Mr. Faust, would you?
I'll clock out, but we should go back.
Okay, okay, so...
I'm confused.
It's okay.
Mayor, I feel like I could answer that question.
Please.
Yep. Mayor and Council, so Parcel C, again, this is a portion of state land, a part of the Peoria Innovation Corps. This land happens to be in the flood channel, so there are rules and regulations about what can be developed and where. When you're in a flood channel, there really is no revision permitted to that, so effectively, this will be, in its future, just open space.
So effectively, when you do the pick, and you need to have a certain percentage of land as open space, you could designate this whole area as open space?
Mayor and Council, to answer that question, we have codes and ordinances that address not only floodways, hillsides, and require a certain amount of designated open space. So as we go forward and as parcels develop, they are required to meet those codes, and if they have a certain amount of hillside, that help, some of that hillside could become open space. If it's in a flood channel with the open space and so forth, we have a number of rules and regulations already in place that dictate how much open space you could have on a property.
But isn't it true that you can kind of shift on...
So I apologize, so the process of being able to, you could speak, I don't, I don't know if that's how you, if we should be answering during this, this period.
Okay, I don't want to push, no, I just, you guys are doing a great job. I said, wow, what about this? What about this?
Mayor, we're more than happy to connect after the meeting to answer any questions that you might have. How great of a job we're doing.
Okay.
All right. I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve agenda item 27R? We're going to take this in two pieces.
Mayor and mayor, we approve 27R as stated.
Second.
Thank you, please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passes 7-0, thank you. Counselor, do I have a motion to approve 28R?
Second.
Pause for one second. Okay, so I will now open the public hearing for 28R. Seeing no requests, I will close the public hearing for 28R. I know, I just think you like having me hit the gavel. Counsel, do I have a motion for, to approve 28R?
I have a motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And it passes 7-0, thank you. I will now recognize City Manager, Mr. Henry Darwin, to give his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I just have a couple of items for this evening, as they're pulling up the presentation. First and foremost, one of the things that I have found particularly interesting about the city of Peoria is that our departments, without being required to actively seek out reviews by third-party accreditations. And the Parks and Rec Department just recently received one of those accreditations from the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Rec Agencies. They're the only national accreditation for Parks and Rec's activities, and they, this reaccreditation highlights our leadership across all areas of operation, from recreation, parks, venues, planning, financial management, and programming and facility oversight. This is, this is an achievement as a result of a dedicated collaborative team working toward a shared vision. We are incredibly proud of the fact that they've accomplished this and excited for what lies ahead. Congratulations to the Parks and Rec's team. Chris, congratulations. Next, we have announced in the past the renaming of our community center, right here in downtown Peoria. It has been renamed the William L. Patenna Community Center. The unveiling of this sign was performed earlier this week. We will have a future ceremonial unveiling where we can invite former council member Bill Patenna and his family and the community to come and celebrate the renaming of this community center. Just a little bit about Councilmember Patenna. He, of course, had an unwavering dedication and countless years of service, both as a city employee and as a member of council. I think he's the only person who ever served as both. This new sign stands as a testament to his legacy and welcoming all of the, to the center and to the benefits of the center. I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And really is evidence of his commitment to the community. His contributions have left an indelible mark on Peoria, and this renaming ensures his spirit of service continues to inspire future generations. And I think, I think Bill's watching this, and we couldn't be happier, Bill, for this renaming of our community center.
I think he requested a pizza party during that.
We will make sure, we will make sure that we have pizza at the ceremonial unveiling that we'll have sometime when the weather is more permitting. But I also want to talk a little bit about the community center, because one of the things that former council member Patenna insisted on regularly, and in my one-on-ones with him, this was the top topic of discussion, was our offering these, a house for, a housing for, a place for these incredible nonprofits, working together to provide our residents, our citizens, with the social services that they need. And you can see that there's 12 of them on the screen there, and they're, they're open Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. And I encourage anyone in our community that is in need of these types of services to visit our community center. And I wanted to provide just a brief example, and pardon my reading this, but a brief example of a recent achievement of one of our nonprofit partners. A resident came into the Peoria Center on June 12, 2025, experiencing homelessness, and had, and he had been unemployed for two years due to unstable housing. During the visit, he was connected to a resource center nonprofit partner, Dress for Success. Through this organization, he received resume assistance, job leads, career guidance, interview preparation, and professional attire. I'm pleased to share that on July 10, 2025, he reported he had secured a management position at a local restaurant, Peter Piper Pizza. Dress for Success shared this success story and sent their thanks to the city's continued support in making these outcomes possible. This is just one of many examples of where the center is changing lives, and Bill, your legacy will live on through these efforts. Before I close out my report, I am thanking staff for moving us here temporarily. I failed to thank the police department for housing us here. This is, as you can see, this is one of their largest, I'm sure this is their largest conference room. We've been very disruptive to their use of this conference room, and, but I, Chief, I wanted to thank you for graciously housing us here, and so, so thank you. With that, Mayor, that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. So I will do my mayor's report. So obviously, we're in this room for a reason. New council chambers, earlier today, the council and I participated in a ceremonial demolition of the old chamber itself. In the coming weeks, construction will begin on the remodel of the council chambers. The project will be a part of a holistic downtown revitalization, along with an update on our front lawn. I believe that we'll be moving back into these, into the new chambers sometime in February timeframe?
Hopefully.
Maybe March sometime, and be able to regain that. The next is the Jefferson House groundbreaking. Next month, the city will celebrate groundbreaking for another development in the downtown area itself, which is the Jefferson House. The Jefferson House, which anybody that sees these, I mean, this is going to really change the look and feel and really open up a lot of things down in the downtown area, along with Caldwell's that is rising from the ground, which is pretty amazing to see. So Jefferson House will feature restaurants, a bar, a retail event space on the northwest corner of 83rd Avenue and Jefferson Street. In addition to offering a mix of food venues, it will serve as a community gathering place for special events and pop-ups, and act as a perfect complement to the Caldwell's barbecue. Just to point something else out, I also was, I heard from two other developers over the last, literally, two weeks, because of all these things happening, that other land is actually being purchased or looked at because of this investment in downtown Peoria. So, you know, everything that we, we had talked about two and a half years ago, and even further, really actually putting this into place, have to compliment the staff and the designs of how these look, and really the work ethic in putting this together. So thank you for everybody's efforts. My last point would be exactly kind of the same thing, and just kind of reiterate some of the stuff that we mentioned earlier. Our job as council is really the social, social return of investment across the city. How do we, how do we better the city? How do we take care of citizens? How do we look out for citizens? When we're, when we're doing projects like economic development, when we're, we're providing fire services or police services, this council's job is to look at everything, not just, not just one or two things. So our, from, from the very thoughtful process of working with staff and looking at all these different things, I really would hope that the, the communication style or the belief, and I'm going to offer this again, somebody wants to have coffee, somebody wants to sit down, somebody has questions, the offer is open. And I would say the same thing is available for other council members, not to put anybody on the spot, but it makes a big difference in being able to have a communication with other people. We've offered this for two years, two and a half years now. I have not had a single person, not one, take me up on actually sitting down and actually talking about any of the things that people come and talk about. So we'll see if that happens. Next is, on the agenda is to call the public. As a reminder, the purpose of the public comment is to allow speakers to share their comments on issues of importance. Speakers should be polite, refrain from profanity, and respect the three-minute, the three-minute time. I guess I should put my glasses on, and I could actually do that a little bit. It's the same thing. Members of the audience should respect the rights of the speakers and fellow audience members, and conduct themselves in a courteous manner and tone, and please do not disturb or disrupt the meeting. By state law, the council is not authorized to discuss among its members or take action, any action raised in the public comment itself.
Got to bring it up, hang on. Good evening. Let's do a little refresher on reasons why Amcor belongs in the pick away from our homes and schools in Vistancia. I've spoken before about our concerns regarding PFAS, or forever toxic chemicals. Amcor has not disclosed to the public which chemicals will be used at their plant as it is considered proprietary information. Cancer-causing, infertility-issue-causing, developmental-delay-causing chemicals that will be released into the air and water adjacent to our homes and a school. It almost sounds like the little community that cried wolf. But wait, Peoria has just received the first installment of what will be in excess of a $2 million settlement from the 3M Corporation for, guess what? PFAS. Forever toxic chemicals that were found in two Peoria city wells. These two wells are now offline due to testing over federal limits for PFAS. I've read this, and I hope it's not true, but the city is also pursuing payments from three other multinational corporations for the same reason, contamination of our water from PFAS. And yet, knowing that you are pursuing statements, settlements from these corporations for contaminants, you proved the placement of a company known to use PFAS right in the heart of our community and adjacent to a K through 12 school. Other reasons why Amcor needs to be relocated are, besides the health concerns, the public safety issues, nightmare traffic, power and water usage, 24/7 operations, and the threat of declining property values. By the way, the U.S. Bureau of Acclimation has determined that Lake Powell could fall below critical levels by 2026, threatening the dam's ability to generate power. If levels fall even further, the Colorado River could stop flowing through the Grand Canyon, and Amcor is slated to use 2 million gallons of water a day. That's scary. Amcor will be visible from our homes at Vistancia, which is the number-one planned community in the state of Arizona. Oh, but yes, you will see the monstrosity from our homes, and yes, Amcor will be visible from the Blackstone Country Club Golf Course, the top-rated private golf course in Arizona. Sure would hate to be a realtor right now. It's ridiculous that the number-one draw to the city of Peoria is our beautiful and peaceful community, and look where we are now. The thousands of residents who are infuriated about this monstrosity and live in the communities of Vistancia, Trilogy, North Point, Mystic, and Blackstone urge you to do the right thing and relocate Amcor out of Vistancia. Thank you.
Is her last name Brown? Nope, okay.
Let me start off by saying that this gives me no pleasure to speak here tonight. The people in Peoria want change, at least a great amount of us. We're at the precipice of American history. The recall of Jason Beck has started today. Thomas Jefferson said that, quote, "Governments derive their just power from the consent of the governed," and, quote, "That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to abolish it or alter it." We live in a representative democracy. Your job is not to advocate for the city. It is to advocate the will of the people. That means you simply regurgitate the people's voices, desires, and wishes. You are failing. This is why the people are upset. You react, but you're not listening. If the people of Peoria want to keep our city a bedroom community, none of you have the right to do otherwise. You are failing. Cities exist to provide the basic city services the people desire: parks, libraries, infrastructure, police and fire. Again, you are failing to provide the services the people want and replace them with expensive toys and services that are draining city reserves and driving up taxes and fees. I know a lot of people are going to ask, what is it going to cost the city to recall Jason Beck? It's $270,000. Look at the cost of any one of the helicopters. It's cheap in comparison. Money spent is money saved. I have no personal interest in this recall, other than stand up to the bully of a mayor and council and lead this city towards a future that the people want, because you're not listening to us. There's been no committee formed. It's truly a citizens-based, grassroots effort to take our city back from hundreds of volunteers that are concerned about our city's future. History will be the final judge on the events of a recall for the entire city council. Only once in American history have the citizens attempted such an action. It ended with the city council resigning before the recall was finished. To be honest, I think this is going to be a quick action. I'm confident in recalling every one of you, except for John Edwards. He's truly a nice guy and an activist inside of his district. But this recall is going to happen as expediently as possible to save time, so if I get six of the seven of you, we'll proceed. Thomas Jefferson would want me to tell the council, you do have the ability to resign. I implore you to go home, talk with your friends, family, and most importantly, your constituents. The people will file the rest of the paperwork next week for the council members. Just remember that you will be no longer standing on the side of the people. You've advocated an agenda for the city over advocating the will of the people, but you should be proud. You've done something Lincoln could not do. You brought the North and the South together.
Mayor, Council, Joe Clur, Mesquite District. I've been to these council meetings for the last almost 10 years. I've been at this podium a number of times, speaking on a variety of issues that I thought were important to the city, certainly important to public safety. Sometimes I haven't always been... Sometimes I haven't always been supportive of the council and the mayor's, the former mayor's work and position, but that's my right as a citizen, just as it's every other right of every other citizen, to voice their displeasures. But also, the citizens have a right to have their voices respected and heard, and you have a duty and an obligation to hear those voices and follow through on those commitments that were made during the last election. It was very clear in the last election what the priorities were going to be. Public safety, for one. Secondly, economic development. It's been no secret what you guys have set out to do. I think Councilman Dunn elaborated on that earlier during the evening. And I just want to commend you guys for following through on what's been a very difficult and trying and challenging effort to get Peoria's economic development underway. It hasn't been the smoothest process, I'll be the first to acknowledge that, but I do think it's been a process. There's old saying that there's no growth, there's no comfort in, in the growth zone, and there's no comfort in, vice versa. There's no comfort, there's comfort in the growth zone, or there's no com... You know what it is. I'll remember as soon as I walk, a senior moment. But my point is, you guys are doing the hard work. The election was very clear. The people have spoken. Not everybody's going to agree with everything you're doing right now. Nobody agreed in the election, 100%. That's why you have elections. But I think you guys are doing a great job. The recall, if it ever happens, I wouldn't be too concerned about it. We're, what, a year out of an election anyway? So keep up the good work. You guys are doing what you said you would do, and I think that the people of Peoria as a whole appreciate it and look forward to what's about to come. I think it's going to be very good for everybody. I think in the end, everybody's going to be amazed and surprised of how it all works out. I think it's going to be just great. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, thank you for everyone's speaking tonight. Thank you for everyone being respectful towards each other. It is very appreciated. It's nice to actually see that, and have a good evening. We're adjourned.